Swam Prabha, Digital India, Educated India.
Let's learn about the Austriile Planning Commission and Niti Ayog that has replaced Planning Commission. So in life, we need some sort of planning, right? Most of the times before we do anything, we tend to make plans and we try to execute these things according to the plans we have made. Yes, sometimes things happen spontaneously, sometimes things happen unplanned. However, most of us try to plan things ahead and execute or you know, maybe it could be a vacation or buying some stuff. Could be anything. To give an example, suppose you want to buy a television. One wouldn't randomly go to a shop and buy the first television that he sees there, right? Or one wouldn't randomly go to an e-commerce website and place the order for the first television that pops up on his search. Ideally, what a person would do is firstly figure out how much money he has in hand. Suppose this person has one lakh rupees in his hand. Now all of that money, he decides not to spend on a television, he wants to keep aside some money as savings. Say he decides to save sixty thousand rupees as savings. So this money won't be used for buying this television. So he is left with forty thousand rupees. Now it's not necessary that he has to spend all forty thousand, but he is keeping aside forty thousand to buy this television. Now that he has forty thousand rupees, he decides to buy a forty-two inch television which might cost him around thirty thousand rupees. Once this budget of the television is decided, budget and size of the television is decided, he'll then decide where to keep this television. Or this step can come before deciding the size of the television as well. So he has to decide whether to keep this television in his bedroom or whether to keep this in living room or whether to keep it in dining room. Finally, he decides to keep it in the living room. Once he has decided which room, he'll then decide you know which part of the room he should keep this television. How much space he should allot for this particular television. Once that is done, he decides the size of the television he wants to buy. He might go to an electronic shop and tell the shopkeeper that you know I want a television that is of this size and that my you know the budget that I have for this television is this much. And these are the visual outputs I'm looking expecting from this particular television and I'm expecting this television to use up only this much electricity, units of electricity. So all of this description he'll convey to the shopkeeper and the shopkeeper will show him France models that fit to this description. Or if he wants to buy it online, he you know he'll put on search filters and find the perfect television that fits to the description. So this is just an example like not everyone might plan accordingly according to the example that I gave, he planned differently as well. However, this is just to give an example as to how we plan things in our life. Similarly, a country also needs some sort of social and economic planning for its proper development. So that is why we had a planning commission and that is why we now have Niti Ayog. So the establishment of planning commission was inspired by the Soviet model. The Soviet model of planning was excellent. Jarla Nehru actually visited Soviet Union and he observed that there was much less inequality among people regarding distribution of wealth and Soviet Union actually fared well in the face of certain economic crisis whereas other countries did not do that well. So in nineteen thirty, even before independence, we had a national planning committee under the leadership of Jarla Nehru. You know, which was to look after the planning of the country in the future. So even before independence, the country was conscious that it needs solid planning in order to progress. In nineteen forty-six, an advisory planning board under the chairmanship of K C Niyogi recommended the establishment of a planning commission. So planning commission was set up through an executive resolution in nineteen fifty. So planning commission was a non-statutory body as well as a non-constitutional body. Please note that planning commission was an advisory body, which means that the final say was up to the government whether or not to implement the recommendations given by the planning commission. So essentially, planning commission is only advising the government, is only giving recommendations or suggestions. It is always, it was always up to the government to decide whether or not to implement these suggestions or recommendations. So essentially, planning commission's recommendations had no binding power on the government. So planning commission was established with an aim to find a balance between private and public partnerships, to find a balance between rural and urban economies, to improve the living standards of the citizens, to increase production and to increase employment. So you have already learnt about directive principles of state policies and you know that certain DPSVs are related to the economic or social aspect of an individual's life. For example, DPSVs on adequate means of livelihood, right to work, equitable distribution of material wealth, all of these are related to various social and economic aspects of an individual's life. So because planning commission was interested with the social and economic development of the country, it was one of the tools to implement directive principles of state policy. So let's see what were the main functions of the Austriile Planning Commission. So just as I gave example of a person making a detailed plan for buying a television, planning commission used to assess how much resources the country has and how to augment such resources. So a country has different kinds of resources. It has human resources. So human beings possesses different levels of knowledge or skills that can be exploited. Now, when I am seeing exploitation of any kind of resource, I am not talking about over-exploitation which might lead to the deterioration of such resources. I am talking about effective utilization of such resources. A country has capital resources like money, monetary resources, country has natural resources as well. So there are different types of resources within a country. So firstly, the planning commission will assess or it will estimate how much resource our country has, okay? And it will also see if any resource is lacking in number or if it is not up to the mark, then how to augment or how to increase such resources. Secondly, it will formulate a plan for the effective utilization of such resources so that we can get the optimum result or the best result out of such effective utilization. Thirdly, it will determine the priority. So a country has different avenues of development that it has to focus on, right? There is social development, there is economic development, there is cultural development. It has different sectors that it has to focus on. There is agricultural sector, there is transport sector, there is energy sector, so on and so forth. So it might not be possible for the country to focus on all of these avenues of development or all of these sectors simultaneously. So planning commission used to prioritize which avenue of development it should focus on or which sector it should focus on. And it also used to figure out the factors that were pulling our economy down and the area or the avenue of development in which we lag behind. The planning commission was responsible for the formulation, implementation and regulation of five-year plans. So India had five-year plans from nineteen fifty-one to twenty seventeen. The first five-year plan from nineteen fifty-one to nineteen fifty-six focused heavily on the agricultural sector. So during this period, the farmers were equipped with knowledge regarding modern agriculture. Their focus was on increasing yields. A lot of dam projects were also built during the first five-year plan period. Example, the Bakranandal project, the Damodar valley project, Tungabadra project, all of these were during the first five-year plan period. The second five-year plan focused on the industrial sector, specifically the steel industry. So each five-year plan had a different focus area. So that's about five-year plans. Several units or institutions of the government were also under the Austriile Planning Commission. Such as the Institute of Applied Manpower Research was under the planning commission. The unique Identification Authority of India, which was responsible for the issuance of Aadhaar cards, was under the planning commission. The National Informatic Centre, which is responsible for the development and implementation of the IT systems of the government, was under the planning commission. So even though planning commission was an advisory body and even though the recommendations of it had no binding power, gradually, planning commission became very important and very powerful. The Prime Minister of India was the Chairperson of Planning Commission. It also had a deputy chairman who was responsible for the day-to-day functioning of the commission. Now, he had the power to take part in cabinet meetings even though he did not have the right to vote. But from the very fact that he was able to take part in cabinet meetings, it is very clear that the position of deputy chairman was a very important position. Planning Commission also had ex-official members such as the Finance Minister and the Planning Minister. So whenever this term ex-official member is used, please understand that we are talking about people who became part of or who became members of a particular body or an institution by virtue of the position that they are holding. So Finance Minister or Planning Minister becomes ex-official members of Planning Commission by virtue of the position that they are holding which is of Finance Minister and Planning Minister respectively. Planning Commission also had other members, but please note that there were absolutely no representatives from any of the states or union territories in the Planning Commission. So Planning Commission is not just making plans for the development of the centre, right? They are, they were supposed to formulate plans for the development of the whole country. However, there was absolutely no representation from the states in the Planning Commission. There was another body which had a representation from the states, which was the National Development Council. Now, once planning commission has formulated plans, it was supposed to bring this plan before the National Development Council. This council had members from all states, all chief ministers were there in this National Development Council. So this was the Austriile Planning Commission. On August thirteen, twenty fourteen, the BJP government announced that they are scrapping Planning Commission and a new body will be established in place of Planning Commission. So on first January, twenty fifteen, the National Institution for Transforming India or Niti Ayog replaced Austriile Planning Commission. Niti Ayog was established through an executive resolution. So just like Planning Commission, Niti Ayog is also a non-statutory, non-constitutional body. Niti Ayog is a premier think tank, which means it gives directional and policy inputs to the government. It designs long-term strategic policies and programs and also tenders advice to central and state governments. So what were the reasons why Planning Commission was replaced by Niti Ayog? As I mentioned before, even though Planning Commission was just an advisory body, gradually it became too powerful. It became that powerful that at one point the Administrative Reforms Committee had remarked that Planning Commission had become a parallel cabinet or a super cabinet. So even though it was just an advisory body, it was after a point functioning as a parallel cabinet. Secondly, the concept of federalism was slowly withering away because the flow of development was top-down. The centre decides everything and it was in a way imposed on the states and union territories. Another criticism leveled against the Planning Commission was that there was a huge overlap of functions of the Planning Commission and the Finance Commission. Now the Finance Commission is a constitutional body. So many of the functions that were exercised by the Planning Commission closely resembled to the functions that were supposed to be discharged by the Finance Commission. So these were some of the major criticism leveled against the Austriile Planning Commission. However, the rationale given by the government for replacing Niti Ayog is that India in the recent years had undergone a major transformation socially, economically, technologically and demographically. And because of this, India needs a new body for implementing planning in its country and that's why Niti Ayog was established. Under Niti Ayog, unlike the Planning Commission, the states have a more empowered role and policy designing is not done in a top-down manner, it will be done in a bottom-up approach. And there is improved synergy and collaboration between the states and the centre. The Chairperson of Niti Ayog is Prime Minister, just like how it was in the case of Planning Commission. It has a governing council which consists of Chief Ministers of all states and left-wing governors of all union territories. It also has regional council. So if there is an issue between certain states or union territories, regional council can be summoned by the Chairperson and it will function for a fixed period of time. Such regional councils will consist of Chief Ministers or left-wing governors of the concerned states or union territories. Niti Ayog also has special invitees which are experts or it also has regional councils. So if there is an issue between certain states or union territories, regional council can be summoned by the Chairperson and it will function for a fixed period of time. Such regional council will consist of Chief Ministers or left-wing governors of the concerned states or and union territories. And it will be chaired by the Chairperson or someone who is nominated by the Chairperson for this purpose. Niti Ayog also has other members. It has full-time members as well as part-time members. It has ex-official members who are four members from the Council of Ministers. There is also a chief executive officer who is an officer of the rank of secretary. Niti Ayog also has special invitees who are experts or specialists which are again nominated by the Chairperson. So the underlying theory behind the establishment of Niti Ayog is that there shall be effective implementation of cooperative federalism, which was the underlying theory behind Planning Commission as well, however, it did not materialize completely. Niti Ayog also has three specialized wings. These are the research wing, the consultancy wing and the team India wing. Team India wing consists of representatives from the state and ministries. So it establishes a direct communication channel between the state and Niti Ayog. There are certain offices attached to Niti Ayog such as the National Institute of Labour Economics Research and Development and the Development Monitoring and Evaluation Office. So that was all about the Austriile Planning Commission and Niti Ayog, which has replaced Austriile Planning Commission. We looked into the origin of Planning Commission, the functions of Planning Commission and the reason why it was replaced by Niti Ayog. And with respect to Niti Ayog, we learnt about the how Niti Ayog has been structured in a way to not repeat the mistakes that happened with Planning Commission. The next non-constitutional body that we will learn about is the Reserve Bank of India. So let's learn about Reserve Bank of India, which is the central bank of India. And I'm sure that all of you must have heard about R B I. So the R B I was set up on the recommendation of the Royal Commission on Indian Currency and Finance in nineteen twenty-six. The issue of establishing R B I as the central bank of India was brought up again by the Indian Central Banking Inquiry Committee in nineteen thirty-one. Three years later, the Reserve Bank of India Act was enacted and thereby the Reserve Bank of India as the central bank of India was established. However, please note that Reserve Bank of India was initially not a government-owned bank, it was a private bank and it was nationalized only in nineteen forty-nine. And also from nineteen thirty-five to nineteen thirty-seven, Reserve Bank was located in Calcutta and in nineteen thirty-seven, it was then moved to Mumbai. Now Reserve Bank has a lot of around nineteen regional offices, not just in Mumbai. So that's how Reserve Bank functions now. Now, why was Reserve Bank nationalized in nineteen forty-nine? There are multiple reasons behind nationalization of R B I. First reason is that after the end of the Second World War, there was a trend around the world where countries were nationalizing their respective central banks. For example, the Bank of England was nationalized in nineteen forty-six. This was one of the main reasons behind nationalization of R B I. As for the second reason, there was huge inflation ever since the beginning of the Second World War. So inflation is generally an increase in price of goods or services. So ever since the beginning of Second World, that is from nineteen thirty-nine September to August nineteen forty-eight, there was a huge inflation happening around the world. In August nineteen forty-eight, the wholesale prices almost doubled. So to prevent or curb such inflation tendencies, India needed a centralized bank, which will be its currency and credit manager. So this is one of the other reasons. Another reason behind nationalization is that the country was focusing on planned economic development. So as we learned about the Planning Commission and the five-year plans, the country had a huge focus on planned economic development. And R B I was one of the tools for effective economic development. So that is why we needed a central bank. So these are the reasons behind nationalization of R B I. Currently, R B I has a central board. The central board manages or governs R B I's affairs and the central board of directors is appointed by the government of India. R B I also has other organizational elements such as the Board for Financial Supervision. There is a local board, there is a board for payment and settlements and other components as well. R B I also has around thirty departments including the Central Vigilance Cell. So essentially, R B I is a supervisor of the entire banking and financial system in India. So you can say R B I is the regulator of the banking and financial system in our country. So R B I issues master circulars and directives and notifications to the banking institutions on several topics and the banking institutions are supposed to adhere to these particular guidelines or directions or master circulars. For example, R B I had notified banking institutions to strengthen their security systems to make electronic transactions much more safer. So banks are supposed to put in place risk management system and they have to identify existing risks in their digital transaction infrastructure and also efficient fraud detection and prevention mechanisms among other things. So R B I does all of this to protect the interest of the depositors, to maintain the confidence of the public in the system, to provide cost-effective banking services to them. So R B I as a regulator is one of the functions of R B I. R B I has a lot more functions than that. Firstly, R B I is the administrator of several acts such as the R B Act of nineteen thirty-four, Banking Regulation Act of nineteen forty-nine, Foreign Exchange Management Act of nineteen ninety-nine and many others. The second important function of R B I is, R B I is the issuer of currency. So R B I prints currency notes. However, please note that the coins are minted by the government of India as per the Coinage Act of two thousand and eleven. So government of India means coins and R B I prints currency notes. However, please note that one rupee note is printed by the government of India and not R B I. And this is because one rupee note is not considered as a currency note, it is still considered as coin. So that is the reason why it is still minted by, printed by the government of India. So R B I issues currency, it can also exchange currency notes. So there many times currency notes get damaged because of various reasons, right? Sometimes you might wrap a lot of currency, currency notes with an elastic rubber band and sometimes these rubber bands damage your currency notes or sometimes you might have accidentally washed currency notes along with your clothes and then you will get a very wrinkly, old-looking currency note. Or sometimes insects bite and damage your currency note. So various reasons can be there for a currency note to get damaged. What can you do when your currency notes are damaged? You can give them to your banks and the banks will deposit these notes to issue offices of R B I. Once these notes reach there, R B I will verify the genuineness of these notes and then it will put it into two categories. One is a fit category, which means they can be reissued. So they go back to the economy and the second category is unfit, which means they cannot be reissued and these notes will be destroyed by the R B I. So a very important question here is, can R B I demonetize currency notes? So demonetization is a term I am sure that all of you are familiar with. So demonetization for the, in the recent history happened in two thousand sixteen November when the five hundred and thousand rupee notes were demonetized, which means they are no longer of legal tender value. You cannot use those notes to buy anything. So we had to return all of these to the banks, right? So demonetization happened once again recently with respect to two thousand rupee notes. Who takes this decision? Is it R B I? Because R B I has the power to print money, right? No, it is not the R B I. As per section twenty-six subsection two of the R B I Act, only the central government has the power to demonetize currency notes. R B I does not have that kind of a power. Okay, so that's all about currency printing function. The next function is with respect to monetary policy or credit control. So under this function, you have a monetary policy committee which consists of six members. Three from R B I including the R B I governor and three experts appointed by the government of India. Essentially, what they are doing is they either increase the money supply or they decrease the money supply to keep the prices very stable. So we talked about inflation. There can also be cases where value of money decreases. In both of these cases, in order to prevent any kind of a chaos, the Monetary Policy Committee will either decrease money supply or increase money supply to make the prices stable, keeping in mind the objective of growth. Another important function of the R B I is that it acts as the banker to the government. So what do we do with our money? We deposit in different banks, right? We have South Indian Bank or State Bank of India, we have Cantra Bank, Axis Bank, all of these different banks that are available for different kinds of services, we can deposit money in these banks. Similarly, the government, be it the union government or the state government, they can deposit their money in R B I and then R B I in some cases can make payments on their behalf or carry out exchanges on their behalf. Government can also borrow money, which means to take a loan from a R B I. So government can either borrow money from the internal source which is R B I or it can go to an external or a foreign source such as the International Monetary Fund or World Bank. Another important function of R B I is that it is the manager of foreign exchange. So as I mentioned before, R B I is responsible for the administration of Foreign Exchange Management Act of nineteen ninety-nine. What is foreign exchange? All of these foreign currencies, we are involved in international trade, right? So whenever there is a trade with a different country, there will be flowing in and flowing out of foreign currency like other currencies such as dollar or pounds or any other currency. All of this foreign money flowing in and out of the country is known as the foreign exchange. So R B I is responsible for the orderly management of foreign exchange reserves. And this is done to have a very smooth external trade. Moving on to the next function, R B I also acts as a banker's bank. So as we talked about in the case of R B I being a banker to the government, similarly, R B I is a banker to bank. So banks can borrow money from R B I especially in case of emergency. So R B I is known as the bank of last resort. In the previous slide, we talked about R B I being a regulator. So in this regard, banks will have to take approval from R B I if they want to open a new branch or an ATM. So we've covered all the major functions of R B I. With that, we'll stop discussing about R B I and we'll move on to the next topic. With that, we'll move on to the last part. With that, we'll move on to the last part of this unit in which we'll learn about money laundering. Money laundering as per the UN Office on Drugs and Crimes is a huge issue. Around two to five percentage of the global G D P is being laundered. So what exactly is money laundering? Just like how we wash our used old clothes and get them clean, criminals also employ a lot of methods to clean their dirty money. What is dirty money? Dirty money is all of that money that they have obtained by committing illegal or criminal activities. Now, these activities could be organized crimes such as drug dealing, sex trafficking or other crimes such as murder or even tax evasion. So all of these results in the creation of dirty money. Now, you might ask, why can't these criminals just use this dirty money, just like how everybody else is using their money? See, if you are working in a software company, which is a very legal job and you are getting salary from that job, you can use that money to buy things or you can deposit that money in your bank or in, you know, other kind of mutual funds or something, which is totally fine. However, if a criminal is to do the same with the dirty money that he has, firstly, it might attract the attention of law enforcement agencies. If somebody is depositing a huge amount of money in the bank, obviously, they, it will raise an alarm and they'll ask for the source of the money, that is first. Secondly, they can use this money to trace back the origin of it and they'll find out the illegal or the criminal activities that this person is involved in. So these are the reasons why which criminals prefer to launder money and make it clean so that it can be reintegrated into the financial system. Money laundering is a complex process, it's not a simple process, it has several steps. This is not to say that in reality or in practical situations, criminals are going to go by the textbook and they will be doing money laundering step by step. Sometimes in reality, these steps might overlap or they might not be in the same order. However, we are theorizing, we are trying to understand the concept. So this is for our better understanding as to how money laundering can actually take place. So the first step is acquiring dirty money, obviously. The second step is called placement. In this step, the dirty money is placed into some sort of an establishment. So to give an example, suppose there is a drug dealing operation done by a person, okay? Now, all of the money that he has obtained from drug dealing will come to him, in front of him as cash. Now, as I mentioned, he won't be able to deposit in a bank so as to avoid attraction from the law enforcement agencies. So the second step in money laundering is placement. In placement, what happens is criminals will establish a front for money laundering. So they might establish a shop and they will justify that this money is coming from the business that is going on in this shop. So back in the day, criminals used to establish laundromats. A laundromat are shops where you can go and get your clothes washed. There will be lot of washing machines in a laundromat and you can wash your clothes in any of them by paying money. And these laundromats used to be cash only because see, if the customer is paying through any other method in these modern days, you can have digital payments, right? So all of these can be traced. So if you are paying only in cash, then there is absolutely no way to figure out who exactly went to the shop and paid money. So it is an easy way for the criminal to use this particular establishment as a front for money laundering. This is the first step. This is not enough for laundering the money, the money is still dirty, but it is a start. The second step is called layering. Now, in layering, a lot of complex financial transactions happen. So this money may be sent to offshore accounts. There are a lot of countries and banks in several other countries which provide high security, which keep the source of the wealth or identity of their customers highly confidential. So money can be sent to these banks and from there it can be wired to other banks or other institutions. So a series of very complex financial transactions happened in the second step. This is done to obscure the origin of this money. So if at all, in this stage, law enforcement agency needs to find out the origin of the money, it becomes extremely difficult because a lot of complex financial transactions have happened and it is virtually impossible to find the owner of this money. So you have separated the owner and the dirty money in this second step. In the final step, which is known as integration, this money is put into the hands of the owner. Money is put back into the hands of the owner. So once the owner gets the money, he can use that money to buy things or he might use it as a foreign direct investment or whatever he wants to do with that, he can do. So this is essentially how dirty money gets cleaned and is put back into the financial system. So in India, we have a Prevention of Money Laundering Act of two thousand and two, which criminalizes money laundering and it also provides for confiscation of assets that is derived from or was involved in money laundering. So the most important definition from this act that you need to know is section two U, which defines proceeds of crime. So any asset that is obtained through the commission of a scheduled offense is known as proceeds of crime. So essentially, proceeds of crime is what dirty money is that we were discussing in the previous slide. So the act has a schedule attached to it. In the schedule, it lists out several offenses from other legislations such as the Indian Penal Code, the Arms Act, the Customs Act, Prevention of Corruption Act, Wildlife Protection Act, narcotic drugs and psychotropic substances, all of these offenses are contained in scheduled, schedule of the act. So if some kind of an asset is obtained from the commission of any of these offenses, then that is known as proceeds of crime. Coming to section three, section three punishes actual involvement or assistance or attempt in any of the following processes involved or in connected with the proceeds of crime. So if somebody is trying to acquire proceeds of crime, that is punished. The use of proceeds of crime, possession of proceeds of crime, concealment or projecting it as untamed property, which is essentially what money laundering is, right? Or claiming that it is untamed property, all of this is punished by section three of the act. And the punishment is provided under section four, which is rigorous imprisonment of a minimum term of three years, but it can be extended up to seven years and with fine. The act also imposes certain obligations on various entities such as banking institutions, financial institutions to report if at all they are suspicious of some kind of a money laundering activity. This act also confers a wide range of powers for its authorities such as power to search, power to survey, power to seize and freeze assets, power to attach property, power to issue summons, production of documents and give evidence, power to retain property and records and most importantly, the power to arrest. So Prevention of Money Laundering Act is an important legislation which helps in curbing and preventing money laundering in India. With that, we have come to an end of Unit Twelve.